Let me give you a tutorial, nobody asks for. And this is this piece right? It's five. For one of my modules and in the email he said it's gonna help us the exams. So Wendy and I are going, I think it's at one. Oh, isn't she, I'm always talking about the sunscreen, always telling you guys how good it is for acne. Sorry, there's another God created moment for me. Like I look so cute. Oh, check, 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 like, like. My angels, welcome to a new day, another vlog, please don't mind the clothes. Um, if you watched last week's vlog, uh, you would know that we had a fun day and obviously our clothes were swiky bits. And you can't put swiky bit clothes in your washing baskets because it's just gonna start smelling. So we're trying them here. Very ghetto, I don't think it's ghetto actually. But yeah, good morning guys. Welcome to a new vlog, I'm just about to brush my teeth. It's currently seven AM right now. I have a hair appointment at nine, um. Waking myself up was so hard because I literally slept at three AM editing today's video because today is Sunday. So obviously I have a video going up. Go to have an appetite before one PM. So I've been having yoghurt, like, I bought yogurt last month. And like I didn't really eat it, right? And then one day I just had plain yogurt, because it was plain yogurt. I had plain strawberry yogurt and I just ate it for breakfast and I felt like my stomach wasn't empty. Like I felt okay and I was okay. Gonna start having yogurt for pre-breakfast because I really do struggle to have an appetite in the morning. My mom is not good to skip meals, so. I'm just quickly reviewing. The vlog is about to go up. Red four, um, um, babe, this is painful. This is what you think when your hair is painful. It's not dry, it's damp, um. Yeah, because I, when I shower, I take off my bonnet. But apparently that's bad for your hair, I didn't know that. Like constantly having your hair like wet is bad for it. So when I detangle, let me give you a tutorial, nobody asks for. And this is this piece, right? I start at the end and I do that. And then once it can go through like that, I just keep on going further. And until I get to the roots and the roots are always the most painful place. And then it's detangled, so yeah, I'm just about to do that to my entire head. While I continue to review my video, this thing of me reviewing my, reviewing my videos so late is gonna piss me off. Because now, what if I find an error? Really, I don't because I'm very careful and I'm very like, you know. You know, when I'm editing, but damn girl. And I did find an error in one of the fonts that I used, like I didn't like it, but it's okay. Because I don't think you guys really care about the fonts I use. But I care, I care. Not gonna redo the video because of one font, gee, oh, that's crazy. I was knowing she's doing my hair like this, I also wanted to use her job, but she's at church. Um, so she has her wand, I'm just gonna use mine. So okay, I just hope that it works the same because she has the blue and Isopropyl, Isopropyl is really good. And it's kind of almost. Maybe she asked us while I come back and finish it, no, I should have taken up on it. But yeah, she looks like not full. Okay guys, I just got back from doing my hair. Obviously you can tell by my mood, I hate it, I hate everything, not everything. I like the parting, I think the parting is fine, the parting is fine. But the length is just terrible because like I don't even know what she was doing. Guys, I don't even wanna speak about it, like, it's just a waste of money. I just feel like I just threw my money down the gata, down the drain. Like, I don't know if you guys can see, but the curls, it's just. I've been there since nine, I came back at half past five. Like, I just, I don't wanna hear anything about this hair, like literally, I'm just gonna sleep. Like, let me show you guys how it looks. Ballista was asking to see how it looks, but like I'm just so, I just, I just hate it so much, like. Like, getting, getting triggers, oh. Like, I, I, I'm, I'm fine because to me it's like, it's whatever. Because very like, you know, I was just doing YouTube on visa for exams, so I don't have to worry about my hair. Mid paper, so I guess it serves the purpose that I was like initially. Hmm, a big part of me just wants to take them out. Like, I honestly do just wanna un-braid my hair, like, sit down, un-braid my hair and just have my natural hair maybe do like. Good night, guys, I'll see you guys when my life is interesting again. For now, I'm depressed or expresso because I'm not, I'm not having it genuinely from the bottom of my heart, I'm not having it. So it's just such a waste of my mom's money because I went like, you know what? Bye, guys. It's currently nine, the next day, and I'm on my way to go fix my hair because. Ain't nobody behind there, no. The curls weren't breaking, so I just bought more fiber and we're gonna extend it. I'm already late, so I shouldn't even be vlogging, but yeah. Hopefully I won't be there for too long because they say I'll stay from half past nine to half past five, so. Girl, better hurry up today, thank you. We're back, guys, we're back. Back like a heart attack. Let me show you guys, she absolutely bodied. Guys, when I say bodied, I mean she bodied this part. Absolute, like, yo, she's, she's very skilled in this department of the parting and everything. It's very clean, I'm very happy with it, it's just very plain because it's just black. Um, this is how it's gonna look when I start tying ponies. I feel like she ate my hairline, but lucky, it's still there. It's just like, remember guys, I relaxed my hairline in the last two, two plus or something. Check us the back. Um, yeah, it's longer now, the thing that's missing me office, I don't understand why it's still like this at the ends. Can you see that? Like, I don't, I don't understand, but it's fine, it's not something I'm gonna bother myself over. It is a bit sore, I won't lie, it's a bit sore, but. Yeah, babes, I'm happy it's done, I'm happy it's done. I just need to make a few business calls. Business calls, university, right, of course, you know? And then I will catch you guys later because I do wanna go get water. I should probably keep going now, but like I wanna make a call first, so yeah. Morning, my boobs, morning. I haven't been vlogging since the day I did my hair. Actually, I did vlog, you know, like, yes, I did vlog, I just didn't like it. Um, please don't my balista's bed, my girl just woke up, so not too much on her, please, thank you. She's in the shower right now. Um, yeah, today I'm going to school because there's actually a seminar or something for one of my modules. And in the email he said it's gonna help us the exams, so Wendy and I are going, I think it's at one actually. And then for the rest of the time, I'm just gonna be like genuinely just studying with my, yo. Almost had a pronunciation, she's there. But yeah, for the rest of the time, we're gonna be studying because we are writing on Saturday. So yeah, that's the deal for today, I thought I should just like pick up the camera and vlog and just see what comes out of today. Here is the outfit, all black, my jeans, and then I'm wearing my thongs. Um, for a pop of color, I don't know what I wanna do with my hair, but we're gonna probably leave it like ten. Because it's currently quarter to ten right now. I've just been like getting closer to God again, guys, and I'm so happy, like. I've just been reaching out to him, you know, I've been seeking him again. Because I want my, there was a period in my life where, this is Amla oil. There was a period in my life where I just wasn't doing that and it was very scary. And I continued to try, you know, to seek him, to seek him, to seek him. But I just wasn't feeling it, you know, I just like I wasn't feeling, I was like, oh my gosh, why am I not feeling it? Like, what's going on? But if you're going through that, babe, just continue. Yeah, work with Christ is very, it's up and down, you know, but I feel like I'm in a really good place with him right now, like. I don't know. I'm doing good, I'm doing good with Christ. I have a, um, I'm gonna be working with Island Tribe. Island Tribe is the sunscreen that I'm always, I'm always talking about the sunscreen, always telling you guys how good it is for acne. Sorry, there's another God created moment for me. I'm gonna be working with them, the package should be coming by the fourth of November, it should be here. They want me to create like two TikToks for them, so. Thank you, I'm so excited, like words can't begin to explain how excited I am. I was supposed to be working with McDonald's, but like the things that they're asking me to do, I was like, oof. I don't know, I need to like go over the contract and see if I agreed to anything because. There wasn't even a contract, but I just need to go over everything and just make sure it's cool if I just don't do it. But yeah, guys, let's finish getting ready and I will see you guys when Wendy and I are walking to school. It's actually really hot today for me to be wearing all black, but I'm gonna bring my umbrella which happens to be black. Wow, I know, do you see a trend? Black has always been my favorite color to wear. Black and pink, because I just realized that black and pink are my colors, like they go so well with my skin tone. Okay, guys, the, the revision seminar thing is literally at one. So since it's currently, since it's currently ten, Wendy and I decided that we're just gonna study until one. Attend the seminar, what, what thing for business and then we're gonna head back home. Because that's a lot of studying in one day. Actually, I have a school, I don't know if I should take it though. I should probably go take it, go take it. Because like I am tired, like, because Ballista came back last night and she studied. So obviously like I was like. I'm so uncomfortable, I just finished eating dinner, I had a really bad dinner. And then now the girls and I are going to North Campus to go study. I wanna get a Bioplus at the top shop, I'm just quickly packing my bag and then we're gonna head out. I don't think we're gonna cross nights, we're just gonna study until like pretty late, you know? I'll try that over on it. Take a look at my babe. Guys, I love this jersey so much, I just want even mine, you know? See you. Hey guys, I will catch you guys when we get to North Campus. Thank you, thank, oh, 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 yeah. Okay, my angels, we are back home, let me just take this. Guys, I've finally posted the, is that a mosquito? Yo, some Australian does not have mosquitoes, what is, ooh. Ooh, bro, what is, oh my gosh, it's moving. Guys, I'm not playing, there's a thing. Daddy. I finally posted the water I eat in a day and it's doing like pretty good. According to me, it's doing pretty good, so I'm super happy about that. It's currently at like ten minutes to twelve right now. The girls and I just came back, Ballista stayed behind because she's like, hey, she needs to, you know, she needs to work. So yeah, good study session, good day overall, I'm just very happy with how today went. Um, yeah, W day, W day for real. So tomorrow, the plan for tomorrow is to go refill my water. Do my revision, like cover everything that I feel like is left behind, but honestly, there's nothing left behind. I'll just see if I can get my hands on some post papers, do those. Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm gonna vlog tomorrow, I don't know, we'll see, we'll see. And then Saturday, MJ and I are gonna go to the King's Fest or something, that thing by the beach. Yeah, so there's coming and a few other artists, it's gonna be super fun. I think we're going with Sean, just need to get our hands on some tickets, so I'm gonna take Z and Oscar. She has two tickets left. But yeah, that's me, that's me, that's me, that's me, I'm just really gonna change now. And sleep. Really, that's, that's my day, yo, I will see you guys when I see you guys, probably on Saturday, if not tomorrow. I mean, love you. If I could do belly dancing now, okay. Yo, my stomach looks so different without a belly piercing. Okay, good morning, guys, morning, my angels. Today's, this is the look for today, I'm gonna wear my Air Forces, I feel like I haven't worn my Air Forces in such a long time. I'm also gonna wear the jacket, this is the crust piece necklace. I'm gonna wear the jacket that matches it because, yeah, I never really wear it as a set. Today, I was supposed to go do my laundry, today's Friday. I was supposed to go do my laundry, but like I fell asleep, like literally I got out the shower, I was so tired because I slept late yesterday. Um, yeah, it's currently like ten, half past ten or something, I woke up at seven and. Yo, guys, yo. So yeah, I'm gonna go refill my water bottles and probably get some sushi. But I'm waiting for my PR package because I have a PR package coming in today from Island Tribe. You guys will see that content on TikTok, probably, I don't know when, but it's all gonna be for TikTok. I'm super excited and also like really grateful to even get noodles by Island Tribe. You guys know I've been, guys, I've been rocking with Island Tribe because it's been rocking with me. Like, it's literally the only sunscreen that I've used that's so good for acne prone skin, like it doesn't break me out. It doesn't make me super oily, obviously, I have it on now, I have it on in every single, like. Yo, that's my holy grail, like, that is a God created moment, Jay, through and through. So yeah, while I wait for that package, I'm just gonna reach out, edit the vlog a little bit, see if it's cooking for Sunday. But I feel like it's low-key cooking, like it's high-key cooking even. Yeah, super duper excited for tomorrow, hopefully everything goes well. That's the little update, I will see you guys when my package gets here or something, I don't know. My package is here, let's go fish it. So excited, I'm so excited. This is, this is the life I need to live, my guy. Definitely, definitely the life I need to live. Yo, PR girlies, that's so, oh. That literally has all my information, PR girlies, that's so, oh. I need to actually take a picture of it. Um, because the brand asks for a picture of it closed, the brand, guys, literally. This time last year, I think is when my channel started growing and I. I never thought I would get to this point, so it's so crazy that I'm getting PR, like, me, P, me, PR, like. Ballista, open this grab. Okay, yo, I'm, I'm so blessed, I'm so blessed. We cannot wait to work with you. Oh my guys, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. This is amazing balls, this is amazing balls, this is amazing balls, bro. Okay, it's like a little flyer of like everything I need to do. Okay, okay. I got it. This is so amazing, bro, what the heck, what the heck? Yo, dude, like I really, oh, this is literally like, I don't know where these PR brands are coming from, bro, like. If there's any brand that's watching this and wants me to promote for them, don't be shy, come. I create quality content, 4K content, as you can see, like come on, come easy, hello, hello, Z. Please come, guys, please come. Just come and shine, yeah, just come and a little shine because my emails are always open. Oh my gosh, and you know what makes it crazy is that I actually use Island Tribe, like, like I, I, it's what I talk about. I started using it, I think, this is not promoted, I started using it, I think, um. I wanna say twenty, I was still in high school, so probably like twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, somewhere there and. Ever since then, I've really stopped, so. The fact that they're now like working with me, crazy. It's crazy. Hello, guys, I'm in Trickers, I bought my water and I'm just having some sushi. I would actually go home and have my sushi at home, but I don't wanna do that, I wanna have my sushi here, so. Yeah, it's just that I raised my hard work and dedication. Yo, guys, it is hot outside, okay, it's hot, I just tied my hair in a random bun. So after I decided to end up going, I ended up eating my sushi there, I just went to go sit outside because I'm like, ooh, the sun, oh. I was burning the entire time I was eating and you can see how I'm wearing full black on the girl, never again. So let me show you guys what I got, I ended up going to Woolies, my, my girl, like, Woolies, please sponsor me. Please, I love you guys so much. So I ended up asking Ballista and MJ to just help me film for Island Tribe on Sunday off the church. So it just makes sense that way, like just knock it out of the park and then I got us some snacks as well. Because I wanted to look a specific way. Show you guys what I got us, I got us these, I've never had these, hopefully they're good. And I got us these, I've had these before, I know they're good. I've never had these, but like I think it's pretty cute, like little cans. And then I was gonna get us a watermelon, but I don't know how long a watermelon would have held in the fridge. So I was like, oh, maybe not. And then, um, also got us, these are my favorite candies, guys, if you see these are Woolies. Think of me, think of, think of me, like, these are literally my favorites. And then last but not least, I got us these, they're like yogurt, yogurt juice, juice, I don't know. I thought it was like a kid snack for when we're at the beach, so I need to put these in the fridge and then the rest are just gonna stay in my own because. It's near the hero there, see the content, it came like this, it's super cute, like I love Island Tribe, guys, like literally, literally, I love them so much. Um, inside the box, like. Inside the box, there's the anti-aging protect, I'm gonna give this to my mom because. I'm not saying my mom is old, whoa, mom is very young, thank you, she turned twenty-one, in fact, she's a young girlie. But I know she's gonna appreciate this a lot. And then it comes with this one, this is the one I use, the SPF fifty, you guys know, this is my girl. I literally, bro, I've been using this same tube, like I've been using this one since I got here. I haven't bought one since I got here, that, that, it just shows that it lasts, like this is mine. You guys know I've been using this thing the entire year and I feel like it's about to finish, but not really. Like I could continue probably the rest of the year with it. So I got a new one, super excited, but I'm back at home, my mom and sister and I, like when we use, because we all use this at home. Like it literally finishes quick, like so fast, like it's crazy how fast it finishes. And then lastly, they gave me the invisible spray, I had been wanting to buy this, I told myself that after this one. I told myself that after this one finishes, I'm gonna buy this one because I think this is just more, it's better for when like you're in places that have like a beach and stuff, so yeah. Oh gosh, guys, God is good. Anyways, I'm gonna chill for now. I don't think we're gonna be doing anything else for the rest of the day. I really do have to go do my laundry, but like it's not full. Like my basket is not full or my, I don't know, oh, I now got water. Two bottles, this is gonna last me, it's not gonna last me that long, but I can't get more than two bottles when I'm by myself. But yeah, I'm gonna edit this vlog a little bit, you know, pu maza, pu mazy. Oh, I actually have to upload for Goodness Sisters right now on TikTok. My alarm went off, I was at the, I was at the mall. I'm so tempted to try these right now, but I'll try them with the girls when we're at the beach. Yeah, love ya. I think I'm gonna see you tomorrow cuz all I'm gonna do right now is probably study a little bit. Maybe I'll have a cup of coffee, like revise cuz I'm writing tomorrow. And then tomorrow, writing, and then after that, MJ and I are going out. I'm not sure if Alyssa's coming with us, I don't know. We're going out and then Sunday, going to church and we're filming, so it's gonna be like, just a good time to be alive, man. Guys, literally the entire day cuz I've been up and down, up and down, up and down, filming things for the event that's happening today. This is Jeezy Girl, her and I are gonna go out tonight. We're going out tonight, we're going out tonight, we're going out tonight, we're going out tonight. I'm not feeling it, but we're going out tonight. Guys, we're not feeling it. We tried selling the tickets, we literally bought the tickets for 70 rand, we tried selling them for 50. If that doesn't say we're not feeling it, I don't know what. But it's okay, we're gonna go cuz no one is buying the tickets, so, you know? It might as well, like not waste our money. So we're first gonna go to Cubana to see Sean perform cuz he's performing today. Sean is a DJ, so we're gonna be there dancing. And then after that, we're gonna go to VIP for the actual performance. Let me show you guys the ticket. I don't know which song Sunnabille does, but.
Very cool. I don't know, I've been, you've been singing this song.
So, so Thrill is gonna be there.
Ba zor la la, la la, la la. That one.
Yeah, so we're gonna see them after and then we're gonna come back probably at like 1 AM or something. Yeah, my guys, this is clear, the test went really well. I wrote it in the morning. I feel like this vlog is gonna come out very soon. I'm not gonna update you guys on this fam cuz the last thing I said on this fam about this video was that, oh, I don't think it's gonna come out. I love lying to you guys, okay, not lying, but like, you know? Little white lies, but I honestly don't think it's gonna come together. But anyways, yeah, my babes, um, I will see you guys when we're all done getting ready cuz it's currently half past 5 and we're leaving at like past 8. So we have like three hours to get ready. I'm just gonna eat, I'm probably just gonna have some snacks cuz I'm not too, too hungry right now. Yeah, love you so much, see you in my wedding. Wait, three, hold on. Guys, so soon I want my A, I can't.
Yo, yo, I'm moonday, say ah, ma fan, I want my. Tassis kame, Lucy, ma boy. Guys, 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 guys. Yeah, you bad, lo. You're not me a pay, da, ha? I guess. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Yes, in chat. Guys, come here, it's a. Why did you talk, I'm actually scared for life, man.
Girls are ready. Guys, MJ looks so good with makeup on. Damn, this is, okay, you can't see, but we look really good, trust and believe. I'm with Sean and MJ. Guys, VIP is zero out of 10, it was so boring. But we came to see Sunnabille and Sutrum. Also, we came because we bought tickets.
Yeah.
It wasn't worth it, I won't lie. Yeah, it wasn't worth it. We should have just, after we saw Sean performing, we should have just went home cuz it was boring here. But I met an angel, her name was Annelie, hi, babe. She's just so pretty.
There's another eleven, oh, I thought there was only one.
One of one, one of one. But yeah, guys, we'll update you guys, we're just waiting for our Uber and then we're gonna head home. I just wanna take a shower, honestly. I was still gonna stop at McDonald's.
What do you say, chat? What do you say, chat?
What do you guys think?
McDonald's?
What should we do?
McDonald's?
Yes.
Comment down McDonald's if you want us to go to McDonald's.
Comment down McDonald's. My guys, my outfit was so cute, Shane, like I looked so cute. Oh, fit check, fit check, check, light, light, light? Sunlight? But yeah, guys, I'll see when we get home, love you. Back home, it's currently 2 AM. Like listen, I, I had intended to come home at 12. I don't wanna go to VIP, but like everybody else wanted to go to VIP and I didn't wanna be, um, I don't wanna be a Debbie Downer, so I said, let's just go. But yeah, I'm about to take everything off and go take a hard to steam shower. I'm sorry, I can't, it's cold, like I just need, I just need heat on my body, like immediately. But yeah, I had a really good time out. MJ is probably like in bed already. She's probably gonna use makeup wipes and then just knock out cuz she was really tired. But yeah, I'm glad I went to our gym. I'm glad MJ really enjoyed herself, which was the point of the entire night. But from tomorrow, guys, we're locking in academically as if I wasn't locked in. I've been locked in, like, we talked to Anna, like the lock thing is worth it, can you? But yeah, let me go take a shower, um, with fresh pajamas cuz I forgot to do my laundry, but it's okay cuz tomorrow is Sunday. Tomorrow, I'm gonna be doing like a little, like promo for Island Tribe cuz I got the, oh, I showed you guys in this vlog, I got that box, da 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 da. So I'm gonna be doing promo for it with the girls of the church tomorrow. Then we're just gonna go down to the beach and just like film everything that I need to film. I'm praying accounts are good. I'm not gonna vlog because I just don't wanna have to focus on vlogging and doing promo at the same time. Also, I need this vlog to be out tomorrow. I had intended to not sleep, but I think I'm just gonna sleep cuz I need to edit. I'll try and edit tomorrow, oh, yeah. Anyways, I love you guys so much and I will see you in the next vlog. Bye, my angels.